Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the Order of Business and my request is Secretariat to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Madam Speaker, personal collective privilege, Madam Speaker.
What is your point of personal collective privilege?
Yes, thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, gusto ko lang pong magsalita. Ukol dun sa pananalita ng ating pangulo, ang talumpate niya kagabi. At dito po ay na-involve ang ating kongreso, na sa aking pong palagay, meron pong kolektibang apekto sa ating reputasyon at integridad bilang mababangkupulungan ng ating republika. If I may proceed, Madam Speaker.
Before you proceed, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Honorable Defensor is requesting to speak on a question of privilege as a member of the House. If possible, Madam Speaker, may I request the Honorable Mike Defensor, since we will be opening the privilege hour after the reference of business. If we can entertain.
Madam Speaker, with the request of the Majority Floor Leader, my younger cousin, the Honorable Lawrence Defensor, after the referral of business, Madam Speaker, I would like to take the opportunity to raise a point of personal and collective privilege. I thank the Majority Floor Leader for this opportunity and after the referral, I would proceed with my personal and collective privilege speech. Marami salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Majority Leader, can we proceed with the reference of business?
The Secretary General's directed to do so.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading, House Bill Number 8650, classifying students and teachers of medicine and allied health sciences courses who attended face-to-face classes as frontline health workers, thereby including them among the prioritized groups for COVID-19 vaccination by Representative Castillo.
Refer to the Committee on Health.
Resolution, House Resolution 1561, strongly urging for the immediate procurement of COVID-19 vaccines and the implementation of the nationwide vaccination program by Representative Juarezma.
Refer to the Committee on Health.
Communications, letters dated December 22 and 29, 2020, of Michael G. Aginaldo, Chairperson, COA, furnishing the House with a copy of the 2019 consolidated annual audit report on the DICT and the Philippine Sports Commission.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 14, 2021, of Mario G. Lipana, OIC, Regional Office Number 4- A, COA, furnishing the House with a copy of the 2017 to 2019 annual audit report on the Tuwi Water District, Tuwi Batangas.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 18, 2021, of Secretary Saydamen B. Pangrungan, National Commission on Muslim Filipinos, Office of the President, submitting to the House a copy of their NCMF 2020 annual report.
To the Committee on Muslim Affairs.
Letters and emails from certain municipal mayors and provincial governors submitting their reports on fund utilization and status of programs, projects, activities, implementation relative to Bayanihan grant to cities, municipalities, and provinces, and the local government support fund for certain months of 2020.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Emails dated January 20 and 21 of Arsenia M. Saktalan, National Electrification Administration, FSD, submitting to the House a copy of their report on fund utilization and report on the receipt and utilization of the RRMF sourced from Ga'ha as of December 31, 2020.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated January 29, 2021, of BSP Deputy Director Janice G. Isonzales, transmitting to the House duly certified electronic copies of certain BSP issuances.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries. Session suspended.
...
Hello, sound test. They're still in the mic.
Hello, sound test. Hey, check. This is what... huh?
Tashon Ushu, the majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Michael Tan Defensor of the Partilist Anak Kalusugan to avail of the question of privilege.
The distinguished gentleman from Anak Kalusugan Partilis has ten minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Estrella, our presiding officer, Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Lawrence Defensor. Let me just quote Section 1 of 5 before I begin, Mr. Speaker, "Questions of Privilege." Questions of privilege are urgent matters directly and principally affecting the duties, conduct, rights, privileges, dignity, integrity, or reputation of the House or of its members individually or collectively.
Nagbanggit ko po, Mr. Speaker, no ako'y nagpaalam sa ating kagalang-galing na majority floor leader, na ako po'y tumatayo on a question of personal and collective privilege. Sa kadailanan na ang pangulupo ay nagsalita kagabi tungkol sa imbestigasyon na sinasagawa sa Development Bank of the Philippines na kung saan binanggit niya na nagkaroon ng suspension at if I may quote him directly, sabi niya hindi maganda para sa atin 'yan. Mr. Speaker, the President also stated that there are many investigations of banks, but in this particular case, when we were about to investigate the Lopez loan, we suspended the investigation. At idinugtong niya, Mr. Speaker, na ito daw po ay ibibigay niya na sa Ombudsman. Now, Mr. Speaker, let me begin by saying that I already spoke with the Honorable Aglipay, who was here with us in plenary, the Chairman of the Committee on Good Government. At nagpapasalamat po ako, Mr. Speaker, dahil ngayon po nagkaroon kami ng paglilinaw kung ano ang tatahakin at direksyon ng Committee on Good Government at ng ating Kongreso. Importante, Mr. Speaker, 'yung sinabi ng ating presidente at kung ano ang aksyon na gagawin ng ating Kongreso uhol sa imbestigasyon na ito dahil ang ating reputasyon, ang ating integridad, ang ating pong panunungkulan, our duties and responsibilities si rin Kongres, in particular, the Committee on Good Government, has to pursue the investigations until its final conclusion. Malinaw po 'yan, pagka po nagkaroon ng paghinto, ito ay dinidisionuhan ng Committee. It is the Committee's decision. I'd like to thank the Honorable Aglipay again, Mr. Speaker, during the break. Nilapitan niya po ako at nagkaroon na po kami ng paglilinaw. Because, Mr. Speaker, what happened was, in January 18, nagkaroon kami ng imbestigasyon. Doon po sa aming pag-uusap, sinabi ng Banco Central ng Pilipinas na 'yung mga loan na'to ay walang eligibility. 'Yung po ang nauna. Ang pangalawa po, ang sinabi po nila ay walang mga dokumento at nawawala na daw. Ang hindi alam ng Development Bank of the Philippines, eh meron po tayong hawak na mga dokumento dahil ang issue po na ito ay lumabas na isang dekadlang nakaraan. No less than the columnist Neil Cruz of the Philippine Daily Inquirer, God bless his soul, wrote about this issue of condoned loans of the ABS-CBN Lopez Group. And, Mr. Speaker, it was in fact the very statement of President Duterte that there are condoned loans. And during the hearing, Banco Central ng Pilipinas was affirming that there were loans not given eligibility. Ngayon, Mr. Speaker, kung ito namang depensa nila, sinasabi nila na ito daw po ay pwede sila magbenta kahit hindi naman sa SPAB dahil ito namang po daw ay tax incentive, lalo pong mas masama dahil 'yung samna bilyon na utang, ginawa po nilang tatlong bilyon. Mr. Speaker, I see the face of the honorable, the beautiful face of the honorable Herrera. She requested me not to dwell on the issue, but I'm just stating a fact na meron pong patutunguhan ang isyong 'to, may mga dokumento at may mga ibidensya. At ang pangulo na nga mismo, nagsabi tatlong taong nakaraan, binanggit niya na'to. Kagabi, nagalit na siya sa Kongreso. Bakit natin hinto at ibibigay sa Ombudsman? Ang tanong ko, Mr. Speaker, ano ang ating gagawin? Ang tanong ko, sa liderato ng ating Kongreso, hindi ko na hubabanggitin ang pangalan dahil sabi ni Congressman Herrera, wag mo na sabihin, ang pangalan is Speaker Lord Velasco. Ano ang aksyon na ating gagawin tungkol sa imbestigasyon na ito? Mr. Speaker, again, I thank the Honorable Aglipay. I understand there will be a hearing on the 17th. Sana po ay matapos natin 'to because, Mr. Speaker, in the end, ang talumpati ng ating pangulo was on the vaccination. And he mentioned that the payment for vaccination will come from loans. Ito po ay manggagaling sa utang at ang utang na 'yan manggagaling sa DBP at sa World Bank. Ang pera po ng DBP ay pera ng taong bayan. 'Yan po ay pera ng gobyerno at responsibilidad ng Kongresong 'to na hindi payagan maulit muli ang pagwawala ng pondong 'yan dahil 'yan po ay hindi natin pera, hindi pera ng pribado, kundi pera ng sambayan ng Pilipino. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good afternoon to everyone.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from Anak Kalusugan Partilis, the majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, can I be recognized? Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Michael Aglipay.
The gentleman, Representative Mike Aglipay is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, thank you, Honorable Mike Defensor. Maraming salamat sa iyong talumpati. Nung kami po ay naghearing ng February, uh, January 18,
Privilege or sir?
Ay, napagkasunduan po sa mga resource persons na binigyan sila ng tanning na isang buwan na iproduce po 'yung mga dokumento na kulang, 'yung Lopez Group po, DBP, at saka BSP. 'Yung tanning po na 'yun ay sa Feb 18 pa, kaya ang hearing po natin ay sinuspen ko nung Feb 3, 2. Nung Feb 3 po, natawagan po tayo ni Speaker and ininstructionan niya tayo bisikin di pa Feb 18 is maghearing na. 'Yung utos po na 'yun nung Feb 3 ay, sabi ko, Speaker, kailangan po kahit konting oras mabigyan natin kasi fifteen years ago pa po 'to mga papelis na'to. So napagkasunduan pa namin nung Feb 3 and ininstructionan ko po 'yung conceit na i-prepare ang hearings sa Feb 17. So 'yun po ang napagkasunduan ng lahat at ito po ay pending sa Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. Rest assured po ay hahanapin natin 'yung punot dulo nitong issue na'to. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman from Diwa Partilis, the majority floor leader.
My mic, but...
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Bernadette. Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Bernadette Herrera.
The distinguished Deputy Speaker is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to react because my name was being mentioned. I was looking at the Honorable Defensor because this topic is already a topic in the Committee already for deliberation. And hindi po tama that he's using the time here in plenary to discuss things that are up for investigation in the Committee on Good Government. Kaya ko po siya tinitignan para pigilan po siya dahil hindi po tama na dinidisdiscuss po natin ang bagay na 'to, ang subject matter na 'to. And he gave us his assurance earlier that he will not violate the rules of this floor, of the plenary para po magkaroon ng due advantage doon sa kanyang posisyon. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, I'd just like to put that in record. That's why, that is the reason why I was looking at him to prevent him from saying anything further regarding the subject matter that is already a topic in the Committee on Good Government. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The remarks of the distinguished lady Deputy Speaker is noted by the Chair. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
I move to be recognized the Honorable Kit Belmonte.
I would first to the Honorable Atienza, Mr. Speaker. We would like to be enlightened.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Belmonte yielded to the Deputy Speaker, Atienza. May we recognize the Honorable Atienza.
The deputy, the distinguished Deputy Speaker, hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We would like to be enlightened as to what is the purpose of these deliberations going on now on the floor? To take over the time that we would want to allot to tackle very important measures pending before this body? Ano po ba ang punod dulo nito? At ano po ba ang karapatan? A Congressman Defensor na tumayo upang questionin ang nangyayari sa Committee. Nagbago na po ba tayo na rules? He is mentioning a collective privilege. I do not feel belonging to that issue. That issue is not my own, my concern, and I'd like to be dissociated from his position. And I am questioning his citing collective privilege, but this issue is a very personal one for him. Mabuti pa sinabi niyang personal privilege and I will respect that. Pero collective, I do not feel belonging to what he cited here. He is citing again his personal crusade against the ABS and the Lopez companies. Ako po'y nakadalo sa isang pulong na ginaganap base po sa kanina reklamo. chaired by Congressman Mike Aglipay and I listened to the deliberations and the opportunities given him to support their allegations. And I personally witnessed failure on their part to support their allegations with documents. And I support whatever action the Chairman would take to handle these particular issues because when one goes to any committee for an investigation, he should be ready with documents and not go on a fishing expedition requiring the banks, including the central bank, to bring the documents that they are required to present before the body, before the council, the committee. At this point, bringing the issue on the floor occupies all of our time and I question that particular action because it is not in accordance with the rules.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, before the reply, my name was mentioned and I'd like to react on the statement of the Honorable Atienza, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I yield my time to the Honorable Atienza.
The Chair declares a two-minute suspension of the session.
Check A, sound. Check 1, 2, check.
Thank you, sir.
Session resume. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we resume, may I recognize the Honorable Kit Belmonte?
The distinguished gentleman from Quezon City, Majority Floor Leader, is hereby recognized. Proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I was rising in the middle of the speech of the Honorable Defensor. Out something. However, my microphone was not working at that time, Mr. Speaker. I'm sure my brother will agree with me, Mr. Speaker. Of course, it is his right to speak on something of personal and collective privilege. However, he was, I presume that he was carried away in tackling matters that were already subject matter to a committee deliberation as pointed out by the Honorable Aglipay. I'm sure it was unintended by the Honorable Defensor to get carried away that far and cause these reactions. Therefore, in accordance with our rules, Mr. Speaker, may I move that we strike out all the matters mentioned by the Honorable Defensor from the records that are related to the subject matter discussed already in the Committee, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection?
No, Mr. Speaker, object. Before the ruling of the Chair, may I just quickly reply?
The distinguished gentleman from Anak Kalusugan is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, isa-isahing ko ah. Ang unang binanggit po ni Honorable Atienza, 'yun daw salita ko is not a collective privilege. It is precisely a collective privilege, Mr. Speaker, dahil ang pangulo nagsabi Kongreso.
That is not my point, Mr. Speaker, and I have a motion, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, yeah. No, before the motion, just quick, now, on the, now, on a personal level, Mr. Speaker, I did say it is a personal and collective privilege. Ngayon, Mr. Speaker, sinasabi ni Honorable Belmonte, I already touched on the issue. Mr. Speaker, I never discuss pro or against the issue. Ang sinasabi ko lang 'yung factual na merong mga lumabas doon sa ginawa naming hearing. Therefore, 'yun ang kinagalit na pangulo. Now, if you feel that the President had no right to say that mali ang pagsuspend natin, okay, delete what I said. That there was condemnation, that there was suspension because that is the statement of the President. And if the majority will allow that those phrases will be stricken off, then I would say that this very Congress is fighting the objective and intent of the President. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, gentleman from Anak Kalusugan, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there is a pending motion.
I object, Mr. Speaker. I object. So we vote on it.
There is a motion. Will the distinguished gentleman from Quezon City please repeat his motion?
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, this representation believes we should not vote on a question of rules. This is a rule written in our book of rules governing this particular Congress. And if the gentleman from Anak Kalusugan is citing a subject which is already being taken up in a committee, so what's the basis for taking it up? So therefore, I support the suggestion. Motion of Congressman Belmonte to dispense with this discussion. Otherwise, we will concentrate the whole afternoon today on this issue.
With the indulgence of everybody, will the distinguished gentleman from Quezon City please repeat his motion?
Mr. Speaker.
Or, yes, please.
Sir, Mr. Speaker, I move that the statements of the Honorable General Tallman from Anak Kalusugan, which pertain to subject matters already being tackled by a relevant committee of the House, be stricken from the records of this plenary session.
Majority Floor Leader. I object, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before the good gentleman, Honorable Defensor can make an objection, this representation for the majority joins the Honorable Kit Belmonte and move to strike the statements pertaining to those related matters as mentioned by the Honorable Belmonte. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, I formally move to strike out those statements.
Mr. Speaker, if I may state my objection?
Is there any objection to the motion of the distinguished gentleman from Quezon City?
I object, Mr. Speaker, and if I may state my objection?
I move to suspend session.
Session suspended.
Sabi niya, ready pin.
Speaker, there is a pending motion.
The objection of the distinguished gentleman from Anak Kalusugan Partilis may have been out of line and so basing it on the rules, provisions of the rules, the Chair upholds the motion of the distinguished gentleman from Quezon City. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I appeal the ruling of the-
Thank you for upholding the rules.
Mr. Speaker, I appeal the ruling of the Chair precisely because I'm not arguing-
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session. Session suspended. Session resume. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to make it clear to the gentleman from Anak Kalusugan that we are striking out not the entire speech, but those subject matters that are only subject of the deliberation in the Committee. I would like to assure the good gentleman that we are moving, what we move for the striking out of the statements are those statements that pertain only to the subject matter that is being deliberated now by the Committee.
Mr. Speaker, with the assurance of the Majority Floor Leader, I withdraw my objection. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, gentlemen from Anak Kalusugan. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8554 and the Committee Report Number 722. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. Sumo, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby instructed to read the title of the bill, the number, the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 8554, Anak Granting St. Jude's deuse Institute of Technology Incorporated, a franchise to construct, operate, and maintain radio and television stations in the province of Surigao del Norte and other areas in the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the author of the bill, the Honorable Ace Barberz, to deliver the sponsorship speech. Sumo, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Gentleman from Surigao is hereby recognized. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker. May I request that the explanatory note of the said House Bill be made and adopted into the records as my sponsorship speech, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we join the author and move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech of the bill.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to interpolate on the subject matter, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection to the motion? There being none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to introduce amendments, and there are no committee amendments. I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8554 and the Committee Report Number 722. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? All those in favor of House Bill 8554, say aye. Those who are not, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8554 is hereby approved on second reading. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8553 and the Committee Report Number 721. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed, Secretary General.
House Bill Number 8553, an act granting Palawan Broadcasting Corporation, a franchise to construct, install, operate, and maintain radio and television broadcasting stations in the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of this bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. With that, may I move that we recognize one of the authors, the Honorable Hill Acosta, to deliver the sponsorship speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The distinguished Representative Acosta is hereby recognized. Proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. To our distinguished colleagues in the House of Representatives, ladies and gentlemen, I am privileged to sponsor House Bill 8553 in substitution to House Bill Number 6748 in relation to Committee Report 721. Mr. Speaker, I hereby request that the explanatory note of the bill be made as my sponsorship speech for this bill, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we join the author and move that the explanatory note be made as the sponsorship speech of the bill. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to interpolate on this subject matter, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to introduce amendments, then there are no committee amendments. I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading House Bill Number 8553 and the Committee Report Number 721. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Those, there is a motion for the approval of House Bill 8553. All those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 8553 is hereby approved on second reading. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker. I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Camaral Conference Committee on the Disagreed Provisions of House Bill Number 8261 and Senate Bill Number 1563, lowering the minimum height requirement and removing the height waiver for applicants to the Philippine National Police, Bureau of Fire Protection, Bureau of Jail Management and Penology, and Bureau of Correction. First, the Honorable Narciso Bravo Jr., the Honorable Samir Tan, the Honorable Manuel Cabotchan III, the Honorable George Bustos, and the Honorable Gabriel Bordado Jr. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Camaral Conference Committee on the Disagreed Provisions of House Bill Number 5925 and Senate Bill Number 1855, making the position of a Cooperative Officer mandatory in the municipal city and provincial levels, namely, the Honorable President Jesus, the Honorable Jose Ong Jr., the Honorable Adriano Epcas, and the Honorable Guro Fredo Goya. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of house, I move that we open the privilege hour. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Serio Dagooc of Partilist APEC to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable Gentleman from the APEC Partilist is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mga kagalanggalang na kinatawan ng kongreso na nasa plenary ngayon at sa mga kasama natin sa Zoom platform, sa ating mga kababayan na nakatutok sa ating livestream. Magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Mr. Speaker, sa hapong ito, nais ko pong gamitin ang personal at kolektibong privilehiyong makapagsalita upang pag-usapan ang maaaring kontribusyon ng ating mga rural electric cooperatives sa laban natin sa COVID-19. Hindi po lingid sa kalaman ng nakakarami ng hanay ng mga electric cooperatives. Lahat po ng 121 electric cooperatives na ngayon ay nag sisilbi sa mga kanayunan sa buong bansa ay hindi nahuhuli sa pagkilos upang tugunan ang pasakit na dulot ng ating kalikasan, mga bagyo, sa pagkokumpune ng mga linya na nasisira sa ibat-ibang panig ng ating bansa o sa pandemya tulad ng COVID-19. Simula pa po noong unang ediniklara ang community quarantine, mapa-isiqman yan, modified isiqo o general community quarantine, katulong na po ng gobyerno at ng mga taong bayan ang hanay ng rural electrification sector sa pagharap sa COVID-19. Kung matatandaan po ninyo, pinagungunahan ng Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association of Pilrika ang ambrela organization ng 121 electric cooperatives ang tinatawag naming pantawid liwanag program. Ito po ay isang corporate social responsibility program ng mga electric cooperatives na makalikom ng halos kalahating bilyong piso o 418, 418,062, to be exact, upang makatulong sa electricity bill ng humigit tatlong milyong Pilipino noong panahon kasagsagan ng enhanced community quarantine na hindi po sila magbabayad o sinasubsidays po ng mga electric cooperative ang mga lifeline electricity bill at sa mga araw at buwan na sumunod. Matuloy pong naging maluwag ang mga kooperatibang ito sa paniningil sa ating mga member consumer owners. Ngayon pong napakalayo na ng naabot ng ating laban kontra sa COVID-19. Ngayon pong may natuklasa na tayong vaccine. Ngayon pong nagpa-plano na ang ating gobyerno na magangkat ng 148 million doses ngayong taon na ito. Muli po ay nais naming ipakita sa ating mga kababayan ang aming kahandaan upang maging bahagi ng solusyon. Handa po kaming maging kabahagi ng ating gobyerno upang epektibong maipatupad ang ating vaccination program. Bilang kinatawan ng Asosasyon of Philippine Electric Cooperatives, kasama na po ng aking mga kahanay sa Power Block, ang Pilrika, Recuboda, at Akupadayon ay edinidulog ko po sa inyo ang mongkahe namin na gamitin ang compounds ng mga electric cooperatives aming mga multipurpose building at gymnasiums bilang vaccination sites. Habang pinaghandaan ng ating gobyerno ang mag-procure ng bakuna, ang mga electric cooperative sa aming hanay naman po ay handang tumulong sa pagrollout ng COVID-19 vaccines. Sa pamamagitan ng pag-aalok na gamitin ang mga malalaking espasyo na karamihan sa 121 electric cooperative sa mayron gaya ng gymnasium o multipurpose hall bilang vaccination sites para ligtas at mabilisang i-rollout ang mga vaccines. Ang totopo nito, Mr. Speaker, nasubukan po ng mga kooperatiba na ilan ang kanilang mga pasilidad para sa isapang programa ng ating pamahalaan ngayong pandemya ang tinatawag po na kadiwa ni Ani at kita ng Department of Agriculture. Marami din po sa aming mga kasamahan na kooperatiba ang tumulong at nakibahagi sa programang ito ng Department of Agriculture, Department of the Interior and Local Government, at Food Terminal Incorporated, OFTI, upang bigyan ng lugar ang mga mangisda at magsasaka upang ibinta ang kanilang mga produkto sa pamamagitan ng mga gymnasiums at multipurpose building ng mga electric cooperative sa buong bansa. Ngayon pong pinaghandaan na natin ang massive vaccination program ng ating pamahalaan, ang mga electric cooperative po ay handang makipagugnayan sa kanila-kanilang mga local government units para sa mongkahe naming ito na gagamitin ang aming mga electric cooperatives bilang lugar na gagampanan ng programa. Mr. Speaker, saklaw po ng 121 electric ops ang buong bansa. Kaya, sa pananaw po namin, magiging malaking tulong po ito sa ating mga local government units sa rural areas. Mapapabakunan ang mga malalayong komunidad ng ligtas at nasa tamang sistema dahil ang mga electric cooperatives ay mayron din pong mga pasilidad sa pagpresirba sa mga bakunang yan. Mr. Speaker, handa po kaming ipagamit. Ulitin ko ang aming mga pasilidad at handa kaming magbigay ng tulong sa pag-oorganisa gamit ang aming mga sasakyan at iba pang mga equipments sa aming operasyon. Higit sa pagpapailaw, layunin po ng buong rural electrification sector ang mapabuti at mapaunlad ang buhay ng ating mga kababayan sa kanayunan at bilang sila ay membrokonsumente ay may-ari ng mga electric cooperatives para sa kanila rin naman po talaga ang mga pasilidad na ito. Mr. Speaker, sa ganitong paraan, ay magkaroon ng alternatibo o karagdagang vaccination sites sa bawat sulok ng ating bansa. Alam natin na may mga komunidad pa rin na malalayo sa ospital o government centers at may mga barangay health centers na hindi sapat ang espasyo. Maliban sa Metro Manila at mga highly urbanized areas, ramdam po ang presensya ng mga electric cooperatives saan mang sulok ng Pilipinas kapumunta. Kung kaya, minarapat ng mga electric cooperatives na maging bahagi sa solusyon at ialok ang kanilang mga compound sa mabilisan, maramihan, at naaayon sa proper physical distancing na pagpabakuna. Kaya naman po, Mr. Speaker, at mga kasamahan sa kongreso, inuulit ko po, kami po sa Power Block bilang representante ng labing apat na milyong Pilipino electricity consumers sa kanayunan ay malugod na inaalay ang aming tulong at suporta para sa mabilis at maayos na rollout ng bakuna sa ating, sa aming mga nasasakupan. Kaysa ang 121 electric cooperatives, handa po kami na maging partin ang programa ng ating gobyerno sa pagkilos kontra COVID-19. Naniwala po kami na sa ating kusang pagtutulungan, ay must mabilis tayong makabangon mula sa pandemyang ito. Mr. Speaker, bukas po ang aming tanggapan sa inyong lahat upang mapag-usapan kung papaano natin sama-samang malalagpasan ang pandemyang ito sa pamamagitan ng malawakang vaccination program ng ating pamahalaan. Muli, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Mga kasamahan ko sa pagkakataong ito na may hayag namin ang mongkahe ng mga electric cooperatives na pagtulong sa vaccine rollout. Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
The Chair would like to thank the Honorable Gentleman from the APEC Partilist and likewise, the Chair would also like to commend the support that the Philippine Electric Cooperatives are providing to our nation. Again, thank you. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we refer the speech, the privileged speech of the Honorable Dagooc to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko of Partilist BHW to avail of the privilege hour.
The most eligible lady, bachelorette. Bachelorette. Representative from BHW Partilist is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand before you on a personal and collective privilege about the balance between the economic benefits of the infrastructure projects in human and ecological health and the preservation of our cultural heritage sites. Mr. Speaker, the Philippines is a middle-income economy and is considered as one of the emerging progressive economies with a positive growth outlook despite a weaker global economy. Notwithstanding the global economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, I say with confidence that we would be able to hurdle with great hope our present economic woes given the resilience of the Filipino nation in the face of economic, social, environmental, and health challenges that we have experienced in the years that passed. But there's a caveat. It has been pointed out also, however, Mr. Speaker, by so many experts in development agencies like Asian Development Bank, World Bank, and the Japan International Cooperation Agency, among others, that the Philippines suffers from unemployment and poverty because of poor infrastructure. In a report by academic Richard Haydarion from Forbes Magazine, the Japan International Cooperation Agency, for example, as published in the Daily Enquirer, said that since 2011, the Philippines has broken out of its historically mediocre growth pattern to feature among the fastest-growing nations in the Southeast Asian region. But the country's growth has been shallow and far from comprehensive, leaving high levels of unemployment, poverty, and hunger relatively in touch. Indeed, infrastructure is clearly the country's Achilles heel. To address this, President Duterte took a bold step by initiating the Build, Build, Build program, which seeks to accelerate infrastructure spending and develop industries that will yield robust growth, create jobs, and improve the lives of the Filipinos. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this representation led the Build, Build, Build program. I am certain that investing in this program is critical in achieving our development goals. Kung ang programang ito ay ipapatupad ng maayos sa takdang panahon, walang duda na maaari nating makamit ang ambisyon natin na matatag. ang ambisyon natin na matatag, maginhawa, at panatag na buhay sa taong 2040. Without any doubt, Mr. Speaker, the Build, Build, Build program will usher in economic growth for our country and the Filipino people. But as we embark on this noble program, Mr. Speaker, this representation would like to entreat the support of this August body to take a closer look into the architectural designs of these infrastructures before we build them. Architecture that would be proudly Filipino. Architecture that would give us a sense of pride and belonging. Architecture that would present us to the world about who we really are. At the most, fundamental buildings provide shelter. At best, they enrich people's experiences and improve lives. Genuine progress indicators of today are not exactly run by numbers anymore. It is how people feel about themselves. Prosperity is not only from economic gains, but also has a societal and humanitarian indicators as well, where well-being and wellness are part of the index. I entreat the support of this August body to support the call of our architectural sector to contract our Filipino architects and interior designers as part of the Build, Build, Build programs that involve human use, to not just build, but create and design true landmarks of the Philippine culture. This would not just improve our tourism, but also boost our economic growth as we define as a nation what is truly Filipino. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I also urge this August body to ensure that these architectural structures be aligned with the ecological and human health aspects of such infrastructure projects, as well as the preservation of our heritage and historical sites. Mr. Speaker, as an advocate for sustainable environment and health, I believe it is incumbent upon this August body to make sure that all infrastructures would conform to laws that Congress passed in this respect, such as Clean Air and Water Acts, Hazardous Waste Management Act, Solid Waste Management, and the Renewable Energy Acts, among others. One per article pointed out that the highest goal of green architecture is to be fully sustainable. Simply put, people do green things in order to achieve sustainability. Some of the features worth mentioning that must be included in the design for building infrastructures are as follows: ventilation systems designed for efficient heating and cooling, energy-efficient lighting in appliances, water-saving plumbing fixtures, landscaping with native vegetation, and plan to maximize passive solar energy, minimal harm to the natural habitat, alternative renewable energy power sources such as solar power or wind power, locally obtained wood and stone eliminating long-haul transportation and lessening carbon footprint, and of course, adaptive reuse of older buildings. Mr. Speaker, some of the examples worth mentioning are as follows: first is Minarco Tower, an award-winning corporate tower both locally and internationally, awarded for its sustainable features used in buildings in this structure. Second is Mactan Cebu International Airport, which is designed by Filipino firm Budgie Royal. It features Filipino sensibility in design as well as materials found locally. Another is the Blackbird Restaurant, an example of an establishment that used the art deconstruction that used to be the control tower of Manila International Air Terminal, a very good example of adaptive reuse. Aside from sustainable health and ecological considerations, Mr. Speaker, to be mentioned too is ensuring the preservation and promotion of our heritage and historical sites. I will not delve on this as this is another broad topic. Mr. Speaker, as I have mentioned earlier, I am not really an expert on this matter, but as an advocate for a sustainable environment and health, my conscience dictates that we should take utmost precaution and care in pursuing infrastructure projects. Again, I entreat the support of this August chamber to take a look into this matter. In the exercise of our oversight powers, we owe this to our people from now and for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues.
We thank the distinguished eh lady representative from BHW Party List, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ami Sangkapan for her manifestation.
Yes, the distinguished eh-
Amihilda Sangkapan.
Lady eh distinguished Ami Sang- Representative Ami Sangkapan is hereby recognized.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Allow me to congratulate, manifest my strong support and great appreciation to the gentle lady from Party List BHW for bringing forth before this August body her advocacy on sustainable environment and health. An advocacy this representation also espouses that while I am ardently supporting the programs that seek to further spur the country's economic growth through infrastructural provisions, I would also like to stress, my dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, as an advocate for sustainable environment and the sanctity of life, I believe it is incumbent upon us, dear colleagues, to always put a premium on the interest of the people and to its culture, our environment and biodiversity, our architectural antiquities and heritage. That while infrastructure investment can without a doubt boost economic growth, let us ensure that the laws of the, on the governance of clean air and water, waste management, environmental protection, renewable energy, and national heritage be strictly implemented and are aligned with the designs built for progress. Let us be instrumental in preserving the legacy that we've inherited from past generations for days are meant to be bestowed and be venerated by our future generations. Again, Mr. Speaker, I congratulate my good friend, representative of Party List BHW, Honorable Angelica Natasha Nikako, for standing up for us, for her generation and the generations yet to come on sustainable environment and health and cultural heritage and preservation. Wassalamualaikum warakmatullahi barakatuhu. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, eh distinguished lady from eh Amin Anak Mindanao Party List, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we also recognize the Honorable Christopher De Venesia for his manifestation.
The distinguished gentleman from the fourth district of Pangasinan is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, can I be heard?
Proceed.
Alright. Eh, Mr. Speaker, eh dear colleagues, nagpapasalamat po ako kay Congresswoman Angelica Nikako for shedding light on a matter that is underlying our country's road to development. Kasabay po ng Build, 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 padawagan po ng ating mga stakeholders sa arts and culture and creative industries, particular ang sektor ng architecture, interior design, landscape architecture, at urban planning. Na tayo rin po ay sana mag-design, design, design. Ang ibig sabihin lang naman po nito tulad ng pagkakasabi ni Congresswoman Nikako, is for us to take a closer look at the architectural designs of these infrastructure before we build them, to give premium to design and not just functionality. Sa kasalukuyan po kasi, ang well-designed infrastructure ay more the exception than the general rule. At kapag design po ang pinag-uusapan, it ties into the ecosystem of the creative industries, where there is a degree of culture and creativity involved. And that creativity is very much subjective, just like our appreciation of art. Sagana po ang ating bayan sa mga mahuhusay ng mga architect, interior designer, landscape architect, at urban planner na may tuturing po nating first-class at world-class. Sa katunayan, ang ilan po sa kanila ay ating nakapanayam nitong nakaraang mga buwan upang alamin ang kanilang mga layunin, mga pangarap para sa ating bansa. Meron po silang mga perspektibo at wish list na sana ay mapakinggan natin dito sa Kongreso. Hayaan niyo na ibahagi po ng inyong representasyon ang iilan sa mga panayam na ito. Una, ang observation ni interior designer Ivy Almario ng Atelier Almario na pinarangalan bilang Outstanding Professional of the Year ng Professional Regulatory Commission nung 2017. Ayon kay Miss Almario, ang ating mga proyekto sa gobyerno ay may angking bias towards horizontal projects. Horizontal projects refer to heavy civil construction, including bridges, roads, highways, railroads, airfields, and other structural projects that focus on transit. That is understandable because this is indeed what our country needs at the moment: connectivity, mobility. However, kadalasan po ay hindi nagagamit ang talento ng ating mga architects sa isang horizontal construction project. Typically, in horizontal construction projects, the structural engineer acts as the project manager. Sa kabilang banda, ang vertical projects naman ay 'yung mga tulad ng apartment buildings, office buildings, skyscrapers, and other types of commercial establishments. Sa ganitong mga proyekto po, talagang nagagamit ang mga architects and designers to design buildings that are structurally sound, safe, and aesthetically pleasing. Ang isang magandang idea po siguro ay paramihin din natin ang mga vertical projects ng gobyerno. Mas magagandang government offices, hospitals, museums, schools, at social housing projects ay atin ding tutukan at gamitin ang mga talento ng ating mga architects and interior designers. Ano nga ba ang benefit or ambag na mga designers sa mga ganitong proyekto? Ayon kay interior designer Wilmer Lopez, president and creative director of Space Encounters, interior design can help address various economic challenges. It can propose safer and healthier post-pandemic spaces that people can trust and actually use. Interior design can also help improve cultural tourism eh through increased revenue, through better functional setups, and through interior space organization of buildings, both old and new. There are also so-called living challenges that interior design can help solve. Kasama na dyan ang mass social housing and space management. And through proper design, we can also create more flexible community centers that may answer to specific needs of a community or barangay. Ibinahagi naman po ni interior designer Tina Periket, ang principal designer of Periket Galicia, at tinaguri ang Outstanding Professional of the Year for 2016 by the PRC. Na design is not exclusive dun sa mga mayayaman or mga privilege. In fact, ang mga model villages ng Gawad Kalinga ay ginamitan po ng magandang disenyo upang magamit ang mga scrap, tile overruns, and broken stock and paint para magtayo ng mga livable spaces. Gamitin din sana natin ang modelong ito para sa ating mga social housing projects. Maganda rin ang sinabi ni Miss Judith Torres, batikang journalist na ngayon ay editor-in-chief ng Blueprint Magazine. Tanong niya, can you imagine if train stations were designed by mothers with little children? Or if government buildings were designed to improve the quality of our government services? And if big infrastructure projects were built with inclusivity and a design discipline in mind? Isang aspeto rin po ng design, 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 ay ang idea ng adaptive reuse pagdating sa ating mga historical and cultural sites. Ayon kay interior designer Mary Ann Venturina Bula Nadi, head of the Philippine Institute of Interior Designers Committee on Cultural Heritage. We must advocate adaptive reuse for it provides an opportunity for heritage houses to preserve their historicity and their important physical elements while being attuned to the present needs of their users. While we should strive towards a more developed future for our country, we must do so while keeping our history and culture in mind. Ito naman po ang ibinahagi sa atin ni Architect Jason Buonsalido ng Buonsalido and Buonsalido Architects. Sabi niya, if one goes traveling to other parts of the world, the structures there, whether old or new, seem to contribute to creating a unique sense of place. They seem to belong only where they sit, as if they couldn't exist somewhere else. Here in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker, unfortunately, we don't have that identity, or rather, medyo hindi siya nabibigyan ng importansya over the years. We are surrounded with theme developments, imported or copied architecture from other countries, copy-pasted on our culture and tropical landscape. In a sense, a disnification of our public infrastructure. Sa katunayan ayon kay Architect Jason, mula pa nung 1980s, architecture has become a developer's game, capitalizing on colonial mentality by importing foreign styles as theme developments: Swiss chalets, Tuscan villas, American country homes. Uso pa rin ngayon ang Japanese or Swedish-inspired interiors. Aside from the lack of development in Filipino architectural design because of these thematic developments, isa pa pong problema na hinaharap natin ngayon ay ang epekto ng globalization sa Filipino design. Totoo, Mr. Speaker, napakarami pong benefits ng globalization and I am not saying we should turn our backs to it. Pero sa larangan ng design, the global trend seems to veer away from fostering Filipino design rather than developing it. With a few exceptional cases referred to by Architect Jason, cities around the world are starting to look more alike. There is a proclivity towards the modern without it necessarily being culturally rooted or distinct, as with the architecture in other countries like Thailand, for example. Example, example, sorry, which puts a premium on their culture. Now more than ever, dear colleagues, in the midst of globalization, there is a need to establish and assert our own uniqueness. Wala naman po masama ang maging inspired tayo ng mga magagaling na bansa at wala ring masama sa kagustuhan nating makipagsabayan. Pero sana ay pagbutingin din natin ang pagkakaroon ng sariling identity sa larangan ng arkitektura at disenyo. We have this opportunity to define this identity, this uniquely Filipino identity through design. And I hope we can use this opportunity to let architecture become a canvas of optimism and hope characteristics that are truly Filipino. We can use this opportunity to let architecture be a vessel for inspiration so that the people can continue to aspire. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, kasama po sa manifestation na ito ay ang commitment ng inyong lingkod para paitingin ang mga architecture and interior design laws ng ating bansa para mabigyan sila ng mas malawak na representasyon sa infrastructure development ng Pilipinas. In fact, I'd like to share with you some of the steps that we can take towards a more Filipino design-centric architecture. Siyempre, kailangan natin idefine ng mas husto ang Philippine architecture. As I mentioned, we now have an opportunity to find this eh as we aspire to have and to show through our architectural design. We must double down on our efforts to develop a working framework on Philippine architecture na I'm very confident and excited. Ito po ay pangunahan ng ating kasamahan sa achieve na si Congresswoman Nikako at full support po kaming lahat sa kanya, especially in relation to societal and cultural development and progress. Siyempre, kailangan bumunang council, whether permanent or ad hoc, composed of architects, culturalists, and experts who shall lead the way in these efforts. Meron naman po tayong Philippine Design Competitiveness Act at meron naman po tayong National Design Council, pero importante na klaro po ang kanilang mga responsibilities. At dapat kasama po dun sa mga policy ng Design Center of the Philippines ay 'yung policy na makakapekto sa design ng ating public infrastructure. And sana po may input dyan ang ating mga architects and culturalists. Kailangan din natin paitingin ang ating documentation ng ating eh Philippine architecture. Kailangan meron tayong detailed and comprehensive compendium kung ano-ano ba 'yung mga styles na eh talagang naging bida sa Pilipinas over the decades kasi nag-iiba-iba po 'yan mula 1920s until the present. Napakayaman po kasi ng pre-colonial and colonial practices and designs na pwede sana nating ma-integrate sa modern architectural designs natin. Unfortunately, some are in danger of being forgotten or phased out. Napakarami na pong old buildings with architectural value ang nadedemolish to make way for newer industrial projects. Kulang po talaga ang pagpapahalaga natin sa documentation ng ating architectural works. Sana eh nakalagay po 'yan sa Cultural Heritage Act natin, sa RA10066. Sana po ang mga LGUs natin through the cultural offices ay magme-maintain ng inventory ng cultural property under their jurisdiction. Kailangan dapat bantayan ang implementation ito at siguruhin natin na mayikayat ang mga LGU, cultural offices, na bigyan ng higit na pansin ang architectural landmarks natin na may significant cultural value in their efforts to comply with this provision of the law. Beyond preservation, of course, siyempre gusto rin natin magtayo ng bagong mga gusali featuring Philippine architecture. And I wholeheartedly agree with Architect William T. and his position that maybe government, the state, should be the one to push this forward, no? Pag narealize sila 'yung value ng magandang design, ng magandang arquitectura. Government should lead the way in advocating for social architecture which promotes connection and access to the public. And I dare say that maybe it's the government's duty to do so. Kaya naman sa ayon din tayo sa opinion ni Architect William, that design should be a priority in our vertical projects, and that maybe it should be taken into consideration in the bidding process. I think, Mr. Speaker, kailangan nating i-revisit 'yung ating mga procurement laws, because there is a proclivity towards 'yung lowest rather than 'yung quality that would take architecture and good design into consideration. Siyempre, I think kailangan din natin ang Office of the City Architect sa ating mga LGUs, kasi alam naman natin meron tayong Office of the City Engineer, Municipal Engineer. Sana meron din tayong architect para, kumbaga meron tayong plano na susundin para sa LGU in the pursuit of its development. And bilang pagtatapos, Mr. Speaker, siyempre, lahat ito, ng mga planong ito ay mababaliwala kung di naman po natin pinapahalagan ng ordinaryong mamamayan ang good design. Sa hulit-huli, lahat naman ng ito ay para sa kanila. Kaya nga sabi ni Architect A.J. Javier, and I quote, "Buildings don't just last because they are strong. They last because they have a permanent and lasting impression on the public. The designers can only do so much, but the public has a great role to play in the preservation of such buildings." No truer words have been spoken, my dear colleagues. So siguro, bilang pagtatapos, I implore you, Mr. Speaker, our dear colleagues, to join me as I support my dear colleague and fellow member of ACHIB, Congresswoman Nikako, in her call for government to take utmost caution and care in pursuing our infrastructure programs. I implore you to ensure that the government's build, build, build will be complemented with design, design, design. Samahan niyo po ang ACHIB sa mga initiatibong ito. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, and congratulations to my good friend, Congresswoman Nikako. Job well done.
Albalagyo salamat at si kayo, distinguished representative from the 4th District of Pangasinan. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate or make a manifestation, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko, together with the manifestations of the Honorable Sangkopan and the Honorable De Venesia to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action.
Is there any objection? Chair here's none. Motion is hereby approved. Speech of the Honorable Representative from BHW Partylis and the manifestations of Representatives De Venesia and Sangkopan be referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third and final reading, House Bill Number 8513, and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8513, and furthermore, proceed with the roll call for nominal voting. Proceed.
House Bill Number 8513, an act providing for a new passport law, repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 8239, otherwise known as the Philippine Passport Act of 1996. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 8513 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castrofredenil, Kayatano Alan Peter, Kayatano Maria La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsunggalao, Ko Angelica, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ecleo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomar, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Dagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padierños, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Pena, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Armientos, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsonmihan, Sin Suwat, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horasyo, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiangko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarazas Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate, Zubiri. Second call in consideration of House Bill Number 8513 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosa, Adyong, Agarao, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Omentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bautista, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bondok, Bulut, Cabredo, Caminero, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Celeste, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Cueva, Dalipe, De Jesus, De Los Santos, Duavit, Duhalii, Enverga, Erise, Ermita Buahin, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Fuentebelia, Garin Sharon, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guiko, Guya, Jaresco Hataman, Javier, Ko Elisa, Liatson, Lopez, Malapitan, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Pichai, Pineda, Romero, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Sangkopan, Saulug, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Si Alvarado, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Teves Jose, Tiangko, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villiar, Villiarazas Suarez, Villiarica.
With 201 affirmative votes, zero negative, and zero tension, House Bill Number 8513 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Carlos Zarate of Bayan Munapartylis to explain his vote.
The distinguished Representative Zarate is hereby recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation votes yes to the new passport law as it addresses prevailing concerns in the country. It is an undeniable fact, undeniable fact, that many of our Cababayans, Mr. Speaker, use passport mainly for overseas Filipino workers, while a few use the passports for various other reasons. No matter how unfortunate, Mr. Speaker, we are because our country exports and advocates for the export of our labor, it is still imperative that we craft laws that save and protect our Cababayans. It is very important, Mr. Speaker, that Filipinos who are forced to leave the country, their families to find better income in other land should still be protected by our government. In this proposed law, the provisions that go after illegal recruiters, fixers, or abusive employers are most welcome. It is only this representation's hope that the proper implementation be done so to be able to prevent evil-minded, gain-driven persons from harming our overseas Filipino workers, or overseas Filipinos. This proposed law is also commendable, Mr. Speaker, in other aspects to win. The privilege for our elderly people or senior citizens for discount, the privilege of our senior elderly, that they will no longer be required to appear. For example, accommodating stateless persons and the issuance of other travel documents for certain situations such as when the passport is lost, revoked, or canceled. Again, Mr. Speaker, for these reasons, this representation votes yes to the new passport law. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished gentleman. Yes, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on third and final reading, House Bill Number 8586, and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill 8586. Furthermore, shall proceed to the roll call, to calling the roll for nominal voting. Please carry on.
House Bill 8586, an act declaring the 24th day of January of every year a national education day. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill 8586. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosa, Abu, Abwegsaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Oredas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barsaga, Bascuk, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castrofredenil, Kayatano Alan Peter, Kayatano Maria La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsunggalao, Ko Angelica, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Culyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebkas, Ecleo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Gomar, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Axel, Lakson Noel, Dagman, Lagon, Lara, Lasatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rogelio, Padierños, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Pena, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Armientos, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singsonmihan, Sin Suwat, Swansing Estrelitas, Swansing Horasyo, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Suntay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiangko, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Bergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarazas Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykurat, Zarate, Zubiri.
Second call in consideration of House Bill 8586. Abante, Abaya, Adyong, Agarao, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Omentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bautista, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bondok, Bulut, Cabredo, Caminero, Canama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castelo, Celeste, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Wanko, Cueva, Dalipe, De Jesus, De Los Santos, Duavit, Duhalii, Enverga, Erise, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Flores, Fuentebelia, Garin Sharon, Goed, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guiko, Guya, Jaresco Hataman, Javier, Ko Elisa, Liatson Lopez, Malapitan, Mangudadatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malaniaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ordanes, Pakya Alberto, Pichai, Pineda, Romero, Sagarbaria, Sagaluran, Sangkopan, Saulug, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Si Alvarado, Talyado, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni. Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villiarica.
With two hundred two affirmative votes, zero negative and zero abstention, House Bill number eighty-five-eight-six is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we also consider on third and final reading, House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine. May I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
Chair hereby directs the Secretary General to please read the title of House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine and thereafter proceed to calling of the roll for nominal voting. Carry on.
House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine, an act providing for government financial institutions, unified initiatives to distressed enterprises for economic recovery guide. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agaraw, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Albario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantey Matba, Amatong, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Omentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Calixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredenil, Kayetano Alan Peter, Kayetano Maria La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalau, Co Angelica, Co Elizaldi, Kawanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kureisma, Cueva, Culiamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, De Los Santos, De Lozo, Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalii, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian, Ebcas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erisse, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Belia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Halosso, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia Chon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangudatatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jeriko, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padearnos, Paduano, Palma.
Mister Speaker.
Pancho, Panotes, Pena, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirezato, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Román, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sa Caluran, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento, Saulog, Sabelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihang, Sin Suat, Swan Sing Estrelita, Swan Sing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Taliado, Tambunting, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Tevez Arnolfo, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umayli Alfonso, Umayli Maria Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villiarica, Villago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Wykurat, Zarate Zubiri. Second call in consideration of House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Adyong, Agaraw, Alvarez Pantalyon, Omentado, Bagatsing, Banyas Nograles, Baronda, Bautista, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bulut, Cabredo, Caminero, Kanama, Kawagdan, Cardema, Carey, Castelo, Celeste, Co Elizaldi, Kawanko, Cueva, Dalipe, De Jesus, De Los Santos, Duavit, Duhalii, Enverga, Erisse, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando Flores, Fuente Belia, Garin Charon, Goed Gonzaga, Gonzalez Sandro, Guico, Gulya, Jaresco, Hataman, Javier, Co Elisa, Lia Chon Lopez, Malapitan, Mangudatatu, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ordanes, Pacquiao Alberto, Pichay, Pineda, Romero, Sagarbaria, Sa Caluran, Sangkopan, Saulub, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Si Alvarado, Taliado, Tan Aliza, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurni, Tevez Jose, Tiyango, Torres Gomez, Ti Alan, Uy Juliet, Veloso, Villia, Villiar, Villiarazza Suarez, Villiarica.
With one hundred affirmative votes, sixteen negative votes and two abstentions, House Bill number seventy-seven-four-nine is hereby approved on third and final reading. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I respectfully move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of Gabriela Partilis to explain her vote.
The representative, distinguished representative, Arlene Brosas is hereby recognized.
Thank you Mister Speaker. Maraming salamat Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, no ang boto ng Gabriela Women's Party sa pa'no kalang guide bill na sa esensya ay ang pagpapadaloy ng pondong bayan patungo sa pribadong sektor na pangunahing pakikinabangan ng mga malalaking korporasyon. Pabalat lamang ang nakasaad na loan assistance sa micro, small, at medium enterprises o MSMEs. Dahil ang pangunahing diin ng pa'no kalang ito ay ang pagtatayo ng special holding company na sasaklolo sa mga strategically important companies. O sa mga madaling salita ay mga malalaking korporasyon na inko't too big to fail. Maliit na pau'tang ang hatid sa mga maliliit na negosyo pero ayuda o bail out para sa mga malalaking negosyo. Padadaanin ang kapital sa Land Bank of the Philippines at Development Bank of the Philippines patuho sa mga tinatawag na investing company na tatamasa pa ng samot sa ring privilehiyo at perks sa ilalim ng pa'no kalang ito. Hindi rin klaro sa pa'no kalang ito ang mga industriya at sektor ng negosyo na makakabeneepisyo sa investments ng gobyerno. At nababahala kami na magagamit ito para konsolidahin at palakasin ang mga kroni ng rehiring Duterte. Sa harap ng pinakamasahol na krisis na kinakaharap natin ngayon na pangunahing nagpapahirap sa ordinaryong Pilipino, bakit natin papunduhan, papunduhan pa ang dagdag napuhunan sa mga malalaking korporasyon gayong higit na kailangan ang dagdag na ayuda sa mga manggagawa at mahangayan? For these reasons, no ang boto ng kinatawang ito sa guide bill. Maraming salamat Mister Speaker.
Maraming salamat din po sa inyo in ang kinatawan ng Gabriela Partilis. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we also recognize the Honorable Femiya Culiamat of Bayan Munapartilis to explain her vote.
The distinguished lady from Bayan Partilis is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat Mister Chair. No ang boto ng representasyon ito sa House Bill number seven-seven-nine. Naniniwala ang representasyon ito na ang pagbuo ng special holding company para sa pagsalba sa mga strategically important companies ay mauuwi sa paggamit ng pera ng taong bayan para sa bail out o pagsasalba ng malalaking korporasyon sa tabing ng loan assistance o assistance program sa mga MSME. Dahil dito, no ang boto ng kinatawang ito. Maraming salamat Mister Chair.
Maraming salamat din po sa inyo representative ng Bayan Munapartilis. Majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Sarad Jane Elago of Kabataan Partilis to explain her vote.
The Honorable Representative of Kabataan Partilis is hereby recognized. Proceed.
Next. Thank you Mister Speaker. House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine provides for the creation of a special holding company to rehabilitate strategically important industries following the historic in the Philippine economy and joblessness amid the pandemic and following the onslaught of extreme weather events in the past months. Investee companies and the SHC can enjoy generous perks and privileges under the proposed measures including the exemption from almost all applicable taxes to operations and free privileges for three years. Procurement activities are exempt from regulations and bidding requirements for three years, an exemption from the GOCG Dominance Act and Philippine Competition Act for three years, noting that the PCA exemption shall only apply to acquisition of assets of an investee company by the SHC among others. The parameters for the selection of these SICs to be supported with the rehabilitation are unclear, Mister Speaker, which will still be subject to final interpretations in the implementing rules and regulations, so the parameter set that can be exploited to favor primarily the kuni businesses, which could also benefit from government takeovers and eventual sellouts of enterprises that are currently in the red. On top of this vulnerability to bail out only the favored businesses, it's also evident how the support for MSMEs is quite superficial. No real preferential guarantee for MSMEs over the bigger chunk of the capital infusion for the SICs. And according to the recent survey conducted twenty-twenty by the United Nations Development Program on the impact of COVID-nineteen on MSMEs in the Philippines, at least sixty percent of the respondents reported that they have not received any assistance from the government, the private sector, NGOs, and other stakeholders yet. Instead of passing laws such as this and this and create that could upside benefit only the big and favored kuni businesses, there must be a guaranteed higher assistance for MSMEs which are calling now for more responsive monetary and fiscal policies to support their enterprises and in effect contribute to the overall recovery of our economy. For all these reasons Mister Speaker, Bata and Partilis votes no to House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Representative from Kabataan Partilis, the majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Stella Luz Kimbo of Marikina City to explain her vote.
Before we recognize the distinguished lady from Quezon City, due to audio difficulties, may I, the chair would like to reiterate that for House Bill number seventy-seven-four-nine, there were one hundred eighty-five affirmative votes, sixteen negative and two abstentions. The Secretary General will please take note. The distinguished gentle lady from Quezon City is hereby recognized.
Mister Speaker, I vote against House Bill number seven-seven-four-nine. The guide bill exempts the acquisition of assets of an investee company by the special holding company from the provisions of the Philippine Competition Act for three years. While I understand that such a provision intends to expedite the acquisitions by the special holding company to promote business continuity, I believe that such an objective must be balanced against the longer-term objective of promoting and preserving market competition. Healthy market competition which helps lower input prices, improve access to markets, and promote innovation is also instrumental to our economic recovery. With the proposed measure, competition concerns may arise from certain transactions considering that equity participation in the special holding company will be offered to private investors. Sa ilalim ng guide bill, may posibilidad ng assets ng rescued company na siyang binili ng special holding company ay maibenta sa competitor nito. Sa ganitong sitwasyon, maaaring mas lumaki o magresulta sa isang monopolio sa isang merkado. More monopolistic markets ultimately mean higher prices and poorer service, and it's the everyday consumer that suffers. Mister Speaker, today, we're all familiar with a burden that comes with rising prices of basic goods. With less competitive markets, we could see more bottlenecks to supply and even higher prices. Is this something that we are all willing to accept? Pag walang review ng PCC, maaaring babago ang latag ng isang merkado at baka magkaroon pa ng monopolio ng dahil lamang sa mga transaksyones ng isang special holding company na exempt sa PCC review. The Philippine Competition Commission is in the best position to weigh in on the potential competition effects of proposed transactions. The PCC already has existing processes in place specifically for situations like these where there is a need to expedite merger review. A blanket exemption from PCC scrutiny and supervision as proposed in the current guide bill undermines an important policy of the state and poses the risk of harm to competition down the line, whether intentionally or not. Mister Speaker, for genuine economic recovery, we must enact policies that are effective in the short term as well as forward-looking. We cannot afford to ignore the repercussions that our recovery measures may have down the line. We have always said that we want not just to recover, but to rebuild, and I believe effective markets belong in the new normal that we are trying to build. In this light, I vote no to the guide bill. Thank you Mister Speaker.
Thank you too to the distinguished lady from Quezon City, the economics wizard of the House of Representatives. The majority floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro to explain her vote.
The distinguished representative, Madam Franz Castro is hereby recognized.
Maraming salamat, ginong speaker, at magandang hapon sa ating lahat. Bumoto po ng no ang kinatawang ito ng Act Features Partilis sa pa'no kalang government financial institutions unified initiatives to distressed enterprises for economic recovery or guide bill. Hindi tumutugon ang pa'no kalang batas na ito sa totoong pangangailangan ng mga micro, small, and medium enterprises na direktang pinantihan na suporta sa kanila. Wala rin sa batas na ito ang kagat na ayuda Wala rin sa batas na ito ang kagat na ayuda para sa mga manggagawa o empleyado ng MSMEs. Hindi masasabing tulong ang binibigay ng guide dahil ang sinasabing tulong ay nasa forma ng loan assistance program or other credit program, kung saan ito ay may kapalit rin at utang na dapat bayaran. Maraming MSMEs na nga ang naapektuhan ng pandemya, ngunit pagkakataan pa ito ng ating gobyerno. Sa Create Bill na direktang bawas ng tax ng mga malalaking korporasyon ay ipinasah ng kongresong ito. Ito ay may dagdag nakita, samantalang dito sa guide bill, hindi ayuda kundi utang. Sinasamantala ng Gobyerno Terte ang pandemya upang magkaroon ng kapangyarihan o kontrol sa business, private sectors, at iba pang korporasyon sa magitan ng pagtatayo ng holding companies at may sarili na itong board of directors at functions. Kahit kaibat din ito ng panukalang batas, na incentives na maaring maging token para sa mga korporasyong sumusuporta sa gobyerno o pinapaboran ng gobyerno. Mr. Speaker, malapit na naman ang eleksyon ng 2022, kung saan ang suporta ng mga malalaking korporasyon ay maaring magamit upang magkaroon ng pondong sa pangampanya. Kaya prioridad ng doterte administration ng mga ganitong panukalang batas na anti-mamayan para lamang sa interes ng ilan. Muliki ng speaker, ang boto ng kinatawang ito ay no.
Thank you, distinguished representative from the Act Teachers' Party List, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we also recognize the Honorable Ferdinand Gaite to explain his vote.
The distinguished Ferdinand Gaite is hereby recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. Speaker, at sa ating makasamaan sa kongreso. Isang magandang hapon. Mr. Speaker, isang taon, halos mula nung umutok ang pandemya, hindi pa rin sapat ang ayuda na nabigay ng pamhalaan sa mga mamamayan Pilipino. Sa kabilang banda, halos wala o kakaramput lang din ang nakuhang subsidiyo ng MSMEs mula sa gobyerno. Ayun mismo, sa Philippine Chamber of Commerce and Industry, subsidiyo na kadalasan ay sa forma lang ng loans na kailangan din na lang na nilang bayaran talauunan. Hindi magkabaga, ang dalawang issue na ito dahil sa kabuwang balangkas ng mga bagay, kailangan lahat ng tulong mula sa gobyerno. Sa paglikha natin ng mga batas, inaasahan ng kinatong ito na malinaw, saan patungo ang mga ganitong klaseng suporta. Sa kaso ng guide bill o House Bill 7749, hindi po natin ito makita. Una, hindi malinaw sa panukalang batas kung magkano ang nakalaan para sa MSMEs. Na sadyang mas nangangailangan, kaysa mas malalaking kumpanya nasa timbangan ng lakas ay tunay na mas nakalalamang. Ikalwa, hindi rin malinaw sa panukalang batas paano makakaavail ang MSMEs ng benepisyo mula rito. Sa benepisyo ng definisyon ng House Bill 7749, sa strategically important companies quote-unquote, lumalabas na big corporations can take majority of the proverbial pie. Para magqualify sa benepisyo ng guide, kailangan may high employability, may downstream and upstream linkages, high efficiency, at product quality quote. Mga katangiang bihirang makikita sa ating mga MSMEs na wala rin namang nakukuhang sapat na suporta mula sa pamhalaan upang sila iulag at mukabutay ng sarili nating mga industriya at homegrown enterprises. Hindi rin mangluwaan ang kinatawang ito. Ang exemption sa itinakda ng guide para sa lilithayin special holding company o SHC na siyang magre-rehabilitate law ng mga kumpanyang nasa temporary insolvency situation. Mga katanungan, bakit kailangan i-exempt sa motoproprio powers ng Philippine Competition Commission ang mergers and acquisitions kung well within the bounds of the law naman ang nais makmit? Bakit kailangan may exemption mula sa injunction order ng korte ang SHC? Kung aso naman ang mga proseso ang pagdadaanan nito? Sa kasulukuyan, itsura ng panukalang batas, hindi nakadisenyong guide para sa MSMEs. Ito'y isang bail out package na bagamat, hindi rin substansyal, ay hindi rin naman pakikilabangan ng maliliit na empresa. Kaya, Mr. Speaker, no ang boto ng kinatawang ito sa House Bill 7749 o guide bill. Salamat po.
Salamat po, ginawang representante ng Bayan Munapartilist, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Carlos Zarte of Bayan Munapartilist to explain his vote.
The representative from Bayan Munapartilist is hereby recognized.
Salamat, ginawang speaker. Bumuboto ng no ang kinatawang ito sa House Bill Number 7749 o ang Act Providing for Government Financial Institutions Unified Initiatives to Distress Enterprises for Economic Recovery or Guide Bill. Ang dapat nating tinutulungan, ginawang speaker, ay ang mga micro, small, and medium enterprises, lalo na at nasa gitna tayo ng isang krisis na pinalala ng pandemya ng COVID. Hindi lang sila ang pinakamarami at nagbibigay ng 62.4 ng empleo. Sila rin ang pinakamalubang naapektuhan ng pandemya at lockdown. Hindi tulad ng mga malalaking kumpanya na humikita pa rin sa gitna ng pandemya, maraming maliliit na mga namumuhunan ang sobrang nalugi at nagsara dahil sa ipinapatupad na quarantine or lockdown. Ngunit sa panukalang batas na ito, ginawang speaker, muling bigyan ng labis-labis na incentives ang mga sinasabi nitong quote strategically important companies. Habang nagpasatayo ng ibang mga panukalang batas na magbubuhay sa mga ordinaryong mamamayan at maliliit na mga namumuhunan, narito tayo at ine-exempt ang mga malalaking kumpanya, for example, sa documentary tax stamp, stamp tax, capital gains tax, creditable withholding income tax, value-added tax, gross receipt tax, at iba pa. Dagdag pa dito, ginawang speaker, ine-exempt din natin ang itinatayong special holding company sa GOCG Act at Philippine Competition Act. Samantala, 10 billion pondong nakalaan para sa batas na ito, or 2.5 billion lang, ang siguradong mapupunta sa mga micro, small, and medium enterprises sa forma ng pautang. Hindi subsedia, hindi grants, kung hindi ito ay pautang. Malinaw na ginagamit lang na panabing ng MSMEs para ipasa ang labis-labis na incentives para sa mga malalaking kumpanya. Kaya't muli, ginawang speaker, bumuboto ng no ang kinatawang ito ng Bayan Munap sa House Bill Number 7749 or guide bill. Maraming salamat, ginawang speaker.
Maraming salamat po sa inyo, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Minority Leader Stephen Paduano to explain his vote.
The Honorable Minority Floor Leader is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Good afternoon to all the members of this House of Congress. Mrs. Speaker, during the deliberations of House Bill Number 7749 of the guide bill, a lot of questions on the proposed bills proposed bill were raised by the majority of the members of the minority, Mr. Speaker. As a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker, a lot of proposed amendments were introduced by Deputy Minority Leader Stella Kimbo and this representation. However, Mr. Speaker, the Chairman of the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, the author of this House Bill 7749, did not accept nor consider the amendment which was which the minority sees to be a major and very important amendment to the special holding corporation's provisions. I find it very unfortunate that not a single proposed amendment was accepted by the committee and by the Chair of the Committee on Banks. Mr. Speaker, during the period of debate and deliberations, there were at least 10 major issues raised by this representation, and I'm reiterating only a few of these concerns, Mr. Speaker. Number one, as also pointed out by fellow members of the minority, the proposed measure, Mr. Speaker, should focus on the SICs while supposedly a separate bill be proposed specifically for medium, small, micro, small, and medium enterprises, Mr. Speaker. Nothing, nothing in this bill, Mr. Speaker, that states to specifically support the MSMEs. That is why, sabi ko nga, itong bill na ito, itong paglagay sa chapter 2 with regards to MSMEs, ay pabango lamang sa bill na ito, Mr. Speaker. Number two, Mr. Speaker, during the period of debate and deliberations, this representation pointed out that the proposed increase of the capital stack of the development back of the Philippines or DBP seemingly, seemingly, Mr. Speaker, a rider provision in the proposed measure, that should be removed. And, Mrs. Speaker, just last week, a proposed measure in this House of Congress was proposed by no other than the author of this bill, the Chairman of the Committee on Banks, Honorable Congressman Juny Kwah proposed a bill to amend the charter of the DBP, Mr. Speaker. And with that, Mr. Speaker, the position of this representation and the majority of the members of the minority was validated correct, Mr. Speaker, that indeed the provision to increase the capital stack of DBP is a rider provision in this said bill, Mr. Speaker. Number three, Mr. Speaker, the proposed appropriation of 10 billion, I am very mature, Mr. Speaker, will hardly make a dent in our economic recovery program, most especially that we are envisioning to aid the liquidity problems of the SICs. Number four, Mr. Speaker, again, I would just like to reiterate during my manifestation, Mr. Speaker, that Section 13, Paragraph H, which refers to accept mechanism should not be put in this bill, Mr. Speaker. What is the relevance of the accept mechanism if an investment becomes profitable? And why is it be mandatory, Mr. Speaker? Number five, Mr. Speaker, the Section 16 of the proposed bill states that the special holding corporation will not be covered by the power of GCG. In lieu of GCG, no safeguard is in place, Mr. Speaker. And again, Mr. Speaker, that was pointed out by the explanation of votes of almost all the members of the minority. Mr. Speaker, these are just some of the amendments this representation wish supposedly to introduce to House Bill 7749. However, since we are now tackling this bill under reading, hence, Mr. Speaker, my vote is no. Lastly, Mr. Speaker, gusto ko lang ipaabot ang taospusong pasasalamat sa mga kasapi ng minerya dito sa House of Representatives, especially to the majority of the members that voted no against this very unpopular bill. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, distinguished Minority Floor Leader, the Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8632 under Committee Report Number 737. I request that this Secretary General be directed to the title of the measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General, please proceed.
House Bill Number 8632, an act granting Philippine citizenship to Kakuangi Frank Williams Kwame.
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that during the period of sponsorship and debate. And with that, to sponsor the bill, I move that we recognize the Honorable Deputy Speaker Robbie Puno.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, my dear colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be used as the, be adopted as the sponsorship speech in support of House Bill 8632 in substitution of House Bill 5951. As contained in Committee Report 737, I so move, Mr. Speaker, and I join the Majority Leader to join me in my motion.
Mr. Speaker, we join the author and move that the explanatory note of the bill be made as a sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. The Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wish to interpret on the bill, I move that we close the period of the sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members wish to introduce amendments. Neither any committee amendment. I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8632. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8632. Those who are in favor, say aye. Those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8632 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to nominate and elect as Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Health, the Honorable Seriaco Bigato Junior Vice, the Honorable Dalia A. Loyola. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to nominate and elect as member of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, the Honorable Anke Hofer.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to nominate and elect as members of the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, the Honorable Lawrence Defansor and the Honorable Michael Gorichetta.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Lastly, Mr. Speaker, I move to nominate and elect as members of the Special Committee on East ASEAN Growth Area, the Honorable Sidil Beng Abwek Zaldivar and the Honorable Adriano Epcas. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session until February 10, tomorrow, Wednesday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Motion is hereby, session is hereby suspended until 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, February 11, February 10.